Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees of the Stevenson Memorial Library January Special Meeting for the Budget Review. Roll call for who's present, Mary Deshaun.
Here.
Eva Hummery.
Here.
Stan Limpert.
Here.
Mark Rogers.
Here.
Earl Svenson.
Here.
And myself is Ann Kavanaugh, and those are the trustees, and then we also have Kathleen Keenan.
Here.
Cindy Maza.
Here.
And Denise Casey.
Delighted to be in your presence.
Okay.
Glad to have you.
Here's a.
One person.
Here is the paragraph I need to read. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A and 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation for members of the public. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast or Verizon channel or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. I did not have any public comment sent to me. And we will dive right into the new business, which is the fiscal year 2023 municipal budget request review.
We are coming together at 5:07, is that correct, Ann?
Yes. Well, it might have been 5:05 before I read all that, but.
So, Ann, how would you like to do this?
Well, Kathleen, do you want to talk about it? Or do people, why don't you give us a summary or an overview? And then we'll all make our comments.
Yes, so the first thing I will do is apologize because materials came so late. It's been one of those really hectic time periods between the holidays and I will say not having a library department assistant who normally does all the number crunching. I'm a much slower person when it comes to doing math, but hopefully the math is correct. At least until we start thinking about where we need to perhaps make changes for financial reasons, stuff like that. So I've sent separate pieces, or Cindy's mailed the four separate pieces to look at. The first one, Mark got dropped off, I guess, the mark is back. The first piece are the goals, the second piece is requesting a part-time position and some extra hours. The third document is the full budget, the document Cindy was just working on. And the fourth piece that we've sent out was just to have you confirm what we discussed in the last meeting on December 15th, when you looked at what your plans were for endowment spending in FY '23. The goals are fairly straightforward, I think. We have talked to a number of different people and parties about the idea of the pop-up van. Everybody loves the idea. I have to say that it's really encouraging to have that much support for the idea of doing the van. And with our initial commitment from the trustees and my commitment from state aid, we already had $15,050. And recently, a member of the community was in and she wanted to know what we were working on. And she always asked that kind of question, so I talked about the budget and I showed her a picture of the van. And you just love people in North Andover, she says to me, and I'm quoting, "You know I'm rich. When you're ready to do this, let me know." And I'm sitting, I'm sure my mouth.
That's awesome.
I'm sure my mouth dropped open. I've never had anybody say to me, "You know I'm rich."
You know, Kathleen, I have had someone say that to me for another organization, so capitalize on that.
Maybe you say, "Well, I thought you might be," but.
Well, I immediately, of course, made note of who that person was, so I will certainly call them back. But it also made me feel like it might really be realistic to do it for this coming year and not think this is a year or two years away. While it's, at this stage, we've been talking about the new foundation and that's where we would use it for fundraising. We are in fact able to accept donations with the tax-exempt status for the town. And this wouldn't necessarily be, this would be a very specific targeted campaign, so maybe we don't need to wait. Especially if we've got just a handful of people who react like that particular patron, that we could in fact have the money in hand and plan to be able to do something this coming year. I would love to be able to have the van for the summertime.
Kathleen, remind us what the, your total number was for the van?
Well, there's different numbers. The Haverhill Public Library, who got their van a few years ago, so figure a bit of inflation and also right now, of course, difficulty with getting parts or things, although maybe not vehicles, it's always hard to guess. Haverhill did something for about $55,000 and Chelmsford, who has what I refer to. So the Haverhill one is really, it looks like a van, a family van that a family would drive. It's not a fancy vehicle at all. And then the Chelmsford pop-up library looks like a food truck where the two sides lift up like wings. And when you lift up the wings, there are built-in shelves and books and the back door opens and you can wheel out book carts and they have tables and, you know, little canopies and stuff that go up. They spent about $75,000 on theirs. Both of them said that, you know, they're using them the better weather months. They, they don't necessarily aim to go out during the worst weather, like, you know, maybe January, February, February. And they have lots of requests to use it, they just aren't able to send it out as much as they'd like because it takes staff to go with the vehicle. So that's part of what ties into our request, that if we're able to pull off the vehicle, then we want to be able to have enough people to go out and be with it. And still, of course, have people in the building to take care of patrons who come into the building. So that, that goal ties directly into the request for the staff that we're put in. The, the second goal really is the same goal we've had for a long time, which is to increase programming and especially to focus on more programming for adults. Someday, when we can be back to doing our programs in person, we're really good at doing programming with children. And our programming for teens have really increased. And the next area to try and grow more are the adults. And that actually ties back in, if we look at our strategic plan, the goals there was that we would target programs for adults. We'd look at things like employment support, we'd look at some like continuing learning options. Again, that relates to having staff to plan and then to execute some of these programs. We might not be the person teaching the financial literacy course, but it takes a person to organize it and schedule it. And right now, of course, a person to run the Zoom meeting and deal with the technology part of it. The third goal is the Community Services Division, the library along with the youth center and the senior center and veteran services and Deanna Cruz, who is the community support person. And then HR is also in there. So our departments, and we all, by the way, our fearless leader is there, that's Dee Casey, is our division director. You know, she likes us working as a team, which, you know, is music to a librarian's ears. We really want to work with other people, we want to partner. So the third goal, because we're trying to be realistic, you know, don't have too many goals because then you can't accomplish them all, is to do some things. Again, we're hoping COVID has left us by July, that we can start doing some activities together and particularly to engender a sense of community, to get people to connect. So the details of, of the goals are there, they're probably pretty similar to things that we've talked about before. So this is a draft, the budget has to be finalized by this Friday. So if between now and Friday you read the document and you discover that my grammar is terrible or you read a sentence and you're like, "I have no idea what that sentence means, Kathleen." Go ahead and write to me and I will fix up the document to have it make more sense. Part of it, it makes sense for us because we talk about it. So when you're reading it, you may actually be kind of filling in the blank because you know the topic. The second document is the request for positions. And of course, I would love to ask for more people, but I'm trying to be realistic because I know that while we're expecting this coming fiscal year to be a better year financially than this past year, this current year is because of COVID, there's still, you know, maybe more money, but it's not an infinite bucket of money. So there are two things that are really important to the library. One is another library assistant, which is a part-time position. And that person waits on the public all the time. One of the things we had to do mid-year this year, and I hated to do it, but we really needed to do it, is we needed another department assistant. The workload around managing the library's finances, whether it's paying staff or paying the bills. We're fortunate because the staff has grown, because we have a better budget to spend, there's more bookkeeping. And while we're keeping up with the day-to-day, we're not addressing some of the longer-term issues that we needed to. Combined with the previous department assistant, who unfortunately had some health problems and had to be out a lot, we had nobody to do it. And Cindy and I were filling in, but every time we do that, we're not getting to the other things that we need to do. So we converted.
Kathleen, can I ask Dee a question? Is it, is it the model for the, for the town to have essentially finance-type functions in each department like this? I would have imagined that that would have been a centralized function a long time ago, actually.
Each department handles their own budgets and their own processing of invoices because the departments have the expertise and the knowledge as to what that invoice or what that cost is. So for example, you know, Kathleen gets a lot of membership from the various electronic formats. It's easier for that person to turn around to Kathleen and say, "Hey, you know, what does this mean?" Than have to call the department, you know, go through more process to get their questions answered. So it's not, it's not unique, or it's actually more common that you have a joint facilities department IT, but usually the finance bill-paying function has been decentralized at the department level. And then it goes up to accounting, who then does the checks and balances for that function. And then it's paid, you know, out of the, out of the finance department.
So what's driving the increase in activity here? That would require the, the other position.
We actually have been seeing this increase since FY '19. In, in FY '19, we actually asked about increasing the hours because the position is only 18 hours a week. So if you, and so one week, the entire focus of that 18 hours was to process the payroll and then verify that payroll was correctly processed and issued. And, you know, as with all payroll and Mark, where you're in HR relations, you know, it's not just write the check, it's like, well, what about the W2s? What about people's step increases? You know, have we gone back into our Munis finance system, for instance, to update the tables with the values? Because it's a new fiscal year, so now we have to go change all the values in the table so when a paycheck calculates correctly.
But in the private sector, that's handled by a central payroll function typically and not a decentralized function like we're talking about. And also, a time card system would drive that information. So once approved by a manager, those time cards are then processed by a centralized payroll function. So Dee, we don't do that here, we don't have that kind of centralized.
We don't right now, but that's something that Melissa and I, you know, are looking at more centralization of different functions. Facilities is one of them. This is something the Munis system would have looked at, you know, is there a more efficient way to do some of these functions? So that is definitely on our radar. It's a system that we inherited, that we're trying to pick away and see what makes most sense for the town. The unfortunate thing is some of these systems that are more customized to towns, that's my dog, I'm sorry, they can be extremely expensive. The last system that I procured cost a million dollars just for the, just for the software for Munis, which is the system that we have. This particular community didn't have a system, so it is very expensive. But, you know, we've been discussing where we have pockets of what we consider inefficiencies and we've done it differently in other towns, it just takes time to make changes.
Yeah, of course, yeah, thank you. Sorry, sorry for the diversion.
No, no, that's good.
It's an excellent question.
Yeah, it's good for you to understand, and it always helps me to hear Dee's explanation because there are times when I'm asked to answer that same question and she's not there. So that was just a great training piece for me to use as well. What happens is that a lot of the work in Munis is centralized. But again, like an invoice, we're the people who look at it and say, "Wait a minute, didn't that person get a step increase? Did something not get, you know, updated potentially in the finance system?" Especially in a system like Munis, unfortunately, some of the data is stored in multiple tables, so table one got updated, but table two didn't. And you're going, "Oh, it worked right last week, but it's not right this week." And that's when you discover that the regular pay rates were working correctly, but the vacation pay rate, which is a separate table, didn't get caught at the same time. And part of this is, it's a bigger issue for us because we have 25 staff. You know, in the town clerk's office, keeping up with this, excuse me, there are two staff members. It's not a big deal to do payroll. Payroll and Stan will, will verify this because he and I have been through the library payroll kind of in detail. We have 25 positions, so it's not as many people as in the school department, but the, the slicing and dicing of categories of pay are very complicated because we have three union contracts in the building. And almost each person has a separate set of rules that have to be applied consistently, so.
Well, the other thing that I would add to that, Kathleen, is that, you know, you have probably a much more complex staffing thing, which staffing situation because of part-time and weakened coverage and all these, you know, various things you're dealing with, that has to result in some sort of complicated payroll functions every week because everything's a little bit different. It's not like everybody comes in and works 38 hours and goes home. You know, it's always a little different and it needs to be checked, I would assume, to make sure it sort of reflects what actually happened. So I think even though it's not a big department, I think it's got some sort of complexity to it where somebody needs to be kind of keeping their eye on it. It's not just a sort of a centralized payroll function that pays whatever it gets. You know, it's probably has to have a little bit more checking than that.
And like I said, we've been very fortunate because we were able to increase, increase the staff. And we've increased our budget in terms of being able to purchase materials. So we spend a fair amount of time making sure that the money is being spent correctly, whether it's a matter of the paycheck has the correct amount in it or whether the invoices are being paid correctly. And then, as with all financial dealings, you have the electric company who's got an issue and you're calling them about the bill. So the person doing that accounting here is the person who's calling and saying, "Wait a minute, this doesn't look right on the electric statement." Or, "Wait a minute, why did you send me a refund check? I don't understand what it is that you're refunding me for." It, it, a lot of it's normal business stuff. It, it's not a lot that can be automated. You need a person who understands accounting and who is good both at phone and email because there's a lot of back and forth. So it, it's why we went ahead and made the change. And honestly, it was fortuitous because, as you know, our department assistant Lisa, who was out a lot the previous year, was out again a lot this year. She was out at year end and as well as stretched into year beginning, which is a really critical time when it comes to the finance system being set up correctly the whole year. And then unfortunately, because of family circumstances, she had to quit and take a full-time job. If we hadn't done this, we'd have had nobody to be doing bookkeeping for months at a time. And it would have been Cindy and I doing that almost all the time and not doing anything else. So very hard for me ever to give up a public service position, but it's really important to pay the bills on time and to pay salary. We kind of had to do that. But we would like to be able to put back that service function again. And a good way for us to do that, although I really like full-time positions, a part-time position would really suit us well for that type of work and working at the desk. And also being available to support the van if we're lucky enough to have the van to go out. The second request is actually to just add hours to a position. We have a position that's already 25 hours a week and we'd like to try to increase it to be full-time. One of the things that happens is retention gets better when the positions are full-time. At 25 hours, the position is already over the threshold for some of the benefits. So it's not a huge jump to add hours to that type of position.
How many hours are, how many hours are full-time, Kathleen?
Thirty-seven and a half.
Okay.
And, and this position is a professional position, so we can see that that's a person with those additional hours, they would be doing a lot of work to support the van, including perhaps going out with the van itself. So, so we see that.
How many hours triggers the accrual for OPEB?
I think it's 20, isn't it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Position's already open, then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So again, trying to be realistic about what we might be able to expect. We've asked for the one part-time position and the additional hours. And I have prioritized that I would need the part-time position over the additional hours. The third document is the actual general ledger or the full accounts that shows all of the line items. And I've done two parts. The salary part is calculated by the finance department where they're going in and using the Munis modeling module to predict what people's salary will be. So when you look at the salary numbers, those come from the Munis modeling, which goes in and looks at the tables and said, "This is the employee, this is their current rate." They'll assign under the professional librarian's contract. This is what their hourly rate is, they'll get a step increase on February 15th. It's a fairly complicated process. We replicate the process, Cindy and I, using an XX, Excel spreadsheet. And I'm happy to say that the work that Cindy and I have done, we've come pretty close to matching what the Munis module did. My hope in the future is that maybe that module would be available to us as opposed, and that's part of the growth with Munis that, you know, Dee mentioned, that it's a very sophisticated enterprise system and we're not using as many modules or as much functionality as we could. It's, it's definitely an area for us to grow, which could reduce, you know, some of the time for other things that we're doing.
Is there a time-tracking module to that software? Time and, do we, do we use it?
Yes, we do, time and attendance, yep.
Does, does the library use that?
We are not, some departments use it and, and I think like the police department or the fire maybe has.
They have a different system.
They have a different system, but they're able to tie their time tracking in. And that's something, you know, Cindy and I have talked about as well, is, you know, is there time tracking or like a, you know, a time card interface that, again, part of adding anything like that, because you've worked on software. When you're adding new functionality or configuring new functionality, you need to plan both the time to configure and then to test before you release. And then you need to make sure it keeps working all the time. So it's an investment that we want to make. And again, that's part of the consideration about having that other library department assistant was if we want to do things like increase the functionality that we use, we're going to need people who are able to help us do that next level of configuration and keep working with it.
But I guess my, my argument would be Dee, that, that, that level of configuration isn't, should not be in the department, it should be centralized. And therefore, the, by adding a module like that, you prevent the need for additional labor, not must-have the additional labor, right? That's the whole point of interfacing a time card system with payroll is to eliminate the kind of manual work that we're already doing now.
Right, and we've been able, you know, Melissa and I have been able to.
Right. And we've been able, you know, Melissa and I have been able to roll in most of the departments. But again, you know, it's one of those during a global pandemic, where does it sit on our to-do list? So we know it's out there. We know there's need for it, but you know, the library is one of the, I think, last departments that would need to be integrated in. And I think it's, you know, it's one of those issues where, you know, we were thinking of changing our enterprise system. So we thought, why integrate them now if we're just going to make a change? Yeah. So what we did is said, okay, let's be, you know, status right now.
Yep, yep.
Until you make that decision, you don't want to make another decision.
Exactly.
But here's a hard cost to doing that, right? I mean, we've got a request for additional labor. But anyway, maybe, maybe laboring this point too much.
And just, just to, just for that, Mark, just to comment on that. So the library is one of the few departments that I know of in my division that does not have a full-time admin. Everybody else has a full-time admin. So they're behind what is the model in all the other departments as it stands today. So, you know, what, what we've done is that we now have two 18-hour a week positions. So we're, you know, close to the full-time hours. But, and, and back in FY19, we actually, at that stage, our, one of our priority requests was to make that a full-time position. And at the time, it didn't go forward and other things came along. And I will say that as the, you know, more recent years passed, although it was a struggle with the department assistant, I totally preferred if we were going to go into the process of increasing a position and using OPEB payments, it would be for a teen librarian. And, and so I made those kinds of trade-off over the past three or four fiscal years. I would trade off Cindy and I and backup, you know, Cindy's time, my time, whatever, supporting the financial back office functions in favor of having a teen librarian, which we were able to do. And hopefully we'll be seeing even more someday when we can, I mean, she's doing things already, but COVID makes it hard to get out and do as much with the kids as we'd like. It's, it's coming. It's got to be coming. Someday, COVID has to go away and we could go do all the other things that we've planned to do. We just kind of, you know, going at them more slowly.
Eva's probably thinking, Mark, you're not on the finance committee anymore. Shut up.
Yeah.
So I think I'll follow that ethereal advice.
Yeah. For the rest of the expenses, because I think of salary as sort of above the line. It's the top half of the spreadsheet and it's always the biggest expense in a department. Everything below the salary line, the expenses, I've left it pretty much flat to what it's been this year. We've been very fortunate. Some of our bigger expenses, like the, the membership fee for the MBLC consortium, which gets us, you know, incredible return on the investment there. The, the, the MBLC consortium, because they've had some cash reserves, has been able to leave the cost flat again for the fourth year in a row, which especially in COVID times is really good because we know a lot of the smaller libraries would have really been struggling to stay as members in the consortium. And it leaves us able to use more money for other things like books because we haven't had to increase our membership. So if you look at most of those numbers, I think we changed one or two numbers in there. No significant change in the amount. But when I meet with Dee and in about two weeks, I think there's a meeting where I will be meeting with Melissa Lynn, who is the finance person and Dee, and we'll be going over the number. And, you know, if necessary, I'll find ways to shave some of those numbers if that makes it more possible to get those positions, the position and the hours. I'm always willing to try to find ways to take care of those expenses in another way if it helps us, you know, address the staffing that we, we would really like to have. And the last document that's there is Cindy went back through our notes and she just put together a document that's, and it's labeled endowment spending for FY23. It basically reflects what was discussed in the meeting in December 15th. So other questions? And like I said, we will still be putting these, it's all of these documents are in draft form. When we turn them into finance on Friday, they have to have a certain marginal setting. They need to have page numbers or not page numbers in various ways. So when these documents go in, in the final form, they may look slightly different. So if there's anything that you see that you have questions or suggestions, there's still time to, to let me know, you know, what you think.
Just to Dee that I think we're really committed to this budget. We had a great conversation about it and, and in the past, I think we've been committed but haven't spent. And here I think we're both committed and we're going to, and we intend to spend. So I think that's a big differentiator. And this makes up for essentially three years worth of prior spending that didn't get, that didn't fully happen.
Kathleen, I have a question about the operating budget.
Sure.
Just a sort of a rough take on this. Looks like our request would be about, and I don't know, since you don't have a FY, what would it be FY22 actual in here? It looks like 5%. Is that right? We're asking for a 5% increase in the budget?
I didn't do that type of percentage yet. And one of the things I will say, Cindy and I are extremely fortunate. The town did a job compensation, a, a job. Well, I guess compensation is the right study for the non-union positions. And Cindy and I were two of the people who benefited, benefited really greatly. So if you look at the full-time salary line and you'll see that there's a very large increase in the full-time salary line between this '22 budget and next '23, about 50% of that increase, in fact, reflects the fact that Cindy's and my salary are now more in line with what our peers are making. Just coincidentally, another municipal, another library, MBLC library, has done something called a market basket study in which she's showing comparable salaries. And it was really great to see that this North Andover salaries are now in a good position. And part of that is obviously personally, I'm happy to get more money. But it also means that at some point, when I retire or leave or for whatever reason, you will be getting the right kinds of applicants for this position because you're paying at a competitive rate. So this year, there's a significant jump. And I think part of that's why you're going to see that, what the number looks. We would never normally ask for 5%. But that really plays into it a lot, that full-time salary change.
If my math is correct, it's 6.06. But I, I fully support what Kathleen has said. And I actually was part of the team that brought the class and comp study forward. And I thought it was very important for us to do that.
Yeah, and I.
Very happy to see that.
You know, and I, you know, I have every expectation that the town won't make us pay for your and Cindy's increase by cutting the budget in other places. Hopefully we'll just be able to do the right thing and carry on, right?
Any other kinds of questions?
The, in the, again, in the operating budget, there's this sort of mysterious line, $12,577.91. Additional, the notes, additional hours, blah, blah. Anyway, what is that?
So the way Munis has been configured, payroll for each person, so my payroll is encumbered at the beginning of the year. And the expectation is I'm going to work 37 and a half hours or I'm going to have a week of vacation. But either way, my number of hours that I work every week is the same and my pay rate is the same. And it's easy math to, you know, have the system automatically issue my paycheck. We have part-time positions who work irregular hours. So the way Munis payroll has been configured, the four people who work the night and the weekend, their nighttime hours, which are consistent 52 weeks a year, are encumbered. When they work the irregular hours on a Saturday or Sunday, their pay is not encumbered in the payroll system. So whenever they get, whenever they work on a Saturday, there is this category of additional pay. So when the Munis projection module looks at what people are going to be paid next year, it looks at the standard encumbered payroll model. It doesn't look at what happens, where, where's the money for the irregular Saturday schedule? So part of my work and Cindy's work with the Excel spreadsheet is to figure out, okay, well, those four nighttime people work how many Saturdays and Sundays and what's the pay rate? So this is an area where the Munis configuration catches us out. If you just run the projection module, you miss the fact that we have four people who are hired and have an expectation to be paid that $12,577, but Munis doesn't recognize it. So the projection module says we only need $291,000 in part-time. But if I have those people work on those Saturdays during the weekends, then I have to account for the fact that there's $12,000 more salary that's needed that doesn't just show up when you hit run the projection module button.
So under the current scenario, then, does that mean that the library, that your operating budget has to eat the $12,577?
If we, if it doesn't get added in, that's exactly right. And over the years, we have used state aid. So a couple of things happened. So if you have a position that's vacant for a few months, you have that salary because you haven't paid the person. But each year towards the end of the year, we start looking at where we are. And sometimes those additional hours, we start paying that salary with state aid because we've used up what's in the budget. So my intent here, particularly with this spreadsheet, because it's no way for Munis to just automatically show this, is to use this spreadsheet as a communication tool to have finance and town government to understand that there is additional salary that is promised to an employee, but the projection module doesn't reveal it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, completely.
That might be the best I've ever explained it, Stan, and I've been trying to explain it for years.
No, I, I get that completely. And I, I just think that's something else that, you know, we'll have to, to depend upon our division head to help bring back to finance, to help try to resolve that, so.
I've got a laundry list, Dan.
And probably not just from the library. I mean, I have to say that I never take any of this stuff as being limited or focused to the library. I talked to the other department directors and we're all very similarly staffed and operating and have very similar circumstances. This is, you know, very general to the operation for the town and, and no focus whatsoever to the library. I think the library is actually very well taken care of when it comes to the town.
But I, I also think Kathleen, this is a good example of why you need a department assistant to help with stuff like this. This is the kind of stuff that is complicated, right?
Yeah.
Not easy. Okay.
And, and I will also of course say thank you to the trustees. When we talked about the endowment spending, it's amazing the things that we're going to be able to do. And already we're doing things right now. We're planning to do things between now and June 30th. It's not that we're waiting until July 1st Dee to spend money. We're going to spend money between now and June and then we'll spend more money after July.
We're burning a hole through our. That's great. Any other comments or questions? It's nice job Kathleen and Cindy.
Yeah, good, good, very good.
Looks good. And I know it was sooner this year.
Can I ask one quick question though about the, back to the goals?
Yep.
The, the division goals, the community division goals? Is that, are those goals just activities that the library will participate in? It's not responsible for those things, right? Those activities, there were three things.
Yep. So we're, we're, we're coming together as a team. So we're all going to be responsible for, you know, facilitating those three items.
Right.
Um, or, oh, go ahead.
The library is not responsible to do that. I mean, to lead this or head this up.
No, no, I am. So when I brought the division back together, it had been disbanded under prior management. And when we brought it back together, one of the things that I started implementing were division goals to bring the division together to operate, you know, and have these projects. So at the end of the day, I'm responsible for making sure that they're facilitated, that they're carried through.
Okay.
Those, did some of those come out of the master plan? We try to, we try to marry the selectmen's goals with master plan goals, with goals of the diversity commission, you know, of the different groups in town. And so that's pretty much where we're, we're sourcing the goals from. And these goals were carryovers because of COVID. You know, as Kathleen said, we weren't able to implement them. And the whole division is really excited. So hopefully this year we'll be able to implement them. This is the year of getting stuff done, I guess. That's great.
And I will say that all of the departments were really, really ecstatic when Dee wanted to reform the division and have us work together. Because in previous years, we had worked, you know, the senior center and the youth center, veteran services, we had worked together really closely. And then we were really dispersed sort of through the town. And we tried to work together, but, you know, when you don't have a regular partnership, it is extra work to try and go out and find, you know, is there an opportunity to work together? This makes it just more natural for it to happen and therefore more likely to succeed. And I will say also that when we look at our goals, including the division goals, our goals tie back to the strategic, to the library's strategic plan, which, which in fact maps back, I think, pretty well to the master plan and the, the select board as well, the town goals.
Good. No, I just remember in the master plan, there being a lot of collaboration and whatnot as a, as goals. So that's great. Okay, should we? Everyone, no. So I assume that that's it for the, the budget, that there's no more discussion. Do we need to take a formal vote on approving that? Or do we wait, is it not quite done?
I don't think, I don't think we vote on the operating budget, that's.
Well, I think in the past, we've just kind of said, okay, this has our support or approval. But I, it doesn't have to be a vote, I don't believe. So are we ready to move on then to new old business?
Sure.
So the historic entrance project?
So the good news is that we're working with Waterfield Design Group. They need to get the construction bid documents out. So we get companies to actually bid to come in and do the work of rebuilding the historic entrance stairs. Before they can finish, they're going to basically create a specification for the, the project. So the spec specifications goes out for the construction companies to bid on. And they need one more specification, which is what are we going to do with that immediate area around the historic steps themselves? So one of the ideas was instead of putting grass on either side of the stairs, when we fill in those two side staircases, we need to put in some new surface. Because we started thinking about expanding that area onto the north lawn, we started talking about, is there a different model than just putting more bricks similar to what we have right now? So the Waterfield Design Group has asked, what do we think we want to use? So they can put that in the bid documents. I sent a spreadsheet and, well, I sent a picture of the design so you can have a sense of the area they're talking about. And then I sent a PowerPoint that has pictures of the pavers. But I also have them here next to me. I can hold them up if you want to see them.
Some of them are heavy.
They're good for weightlifting. There's no doubt about it. Stan, I think, had already said that he liked the look of the granite. And fortunately Eva was able to come over.
Yeah.
As well as Steve Foster. It's always really good for these kinds of projects if we can have Steve as a hands-on partner. And Steve came in and he was also supportive of the idea of using granite for what I call the apron, you know, it's around the two sides. It's the area that immediately touches the stairs.
Which are of course also granite. So that makes it, you know, there's a nice match to that.
Did, did he also mention that granite was a little tolerated salt better than concrete?
Yes. And we talked about that for sure.
That's what I was thinking. It's like so durable. It'll just last.
So that's the, yeah, that's the slab of the granite.
Of course, the cost, is there a cost differential that we should be aware of?
The granite is more expensive.
The granite is more expensive.
But not over the long term.
No.
But when we look at what we've had to do to, to try and keep the brick walkway in functioning shape and not to be a tripping hazard, that especially, I think this granite is going to be a long-term investment.
Well, because it is heavily salted.
It has to be, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And it will match the stairs well if we do the stairs.
Exactly. And we certainly talked of it in terms of longevity, that it was well worth the investment. We didn't want to be cheap now, or, you know, not cheap, that's not the right word. But, you know, penny wise, pound foolish, or anything, any kind of expression you want to use like that. Because this is a long-term investment.
Will the brick walkway still be there as brick?
On the two sides. Attached to one of the emails, there's a design sketch. So, if you think of the stairs as being in the middle, immedi- immediately at the foot of the stairs will become granite, which is actually better for us in terms of tread and salt. And then on both sides of the stairs. So, what will remain of the brick walkway will be the two pathways that come up to the stairs. But in front of the stairs itself will be granite. And it's potentially, you know, long-term, something happens to those brick sides. We're not planning to touch them at the moment.
But you can't.
I was just thinking that, though, maybe we should try to, because they're not in great shape.
Well, my other question would, you know, I like the granite idea. Is the blocks they would put down that shape that you held up, Kathleen?
Yes, so there actually is another piece as well.
Could you lift them both up at the same time?
So, you'll see this one is a large cube. So, it's great to work with the architect, because then you actually get some more details. So, during the construction process, where the pavers are going to go, they will be putting down a concrete bed, and then the pavers go on top of that, which is a standard design for these kinds of pavers and stuff in New England to help against the frost heat issue. The other thing they do is that they build borders. So, you can see that this is much thicker than the paver that I just held up. This gets sunk into the ground, and the paver, the paver goes against it. This becomes the wall that keeps the pavers. So, we have the concrete underneath as a slab to stabilize them. And then we have these on the side that create those borders that keep it from moving side to side. And, and honestly, that has been a regular problem with the bricks. That although we have put in a con, we actually have a concrete slab under the brick walkway right now, we have a problem with the stone dust between the bricks constantly washing away. And as a result, the bricks that are on the side intended as an edge to hold the bricks in place, because the brick is the same size as the brick that it's holding in place, they move. Whereas this one is going to be sunk deeper, we're not going to have that same kind of shifting side to side problem.
Yes, and if you look at the, the drawing that Kathleen sent along, you will note that we did discuss, and whether this happens or not, along the brick walkway that's closest to Green Street, not Main Street, they did draw in a handrail to, to help with that. And we did talk a little bit about replacing the bricks, but as Kathleen said, that's not immediately part of the plan.
And part of this is because this is a CPA grant. You need to stick with what you rec, what you requested in the grant. So, we can't shift too much into doing other activities. And, and having been here when we replaced that brick walkway several years ago, that would be a very expensive change order to the, to the grant that we have right now. So, as long as it's reasonably, you know, functioning, and, you know, the safety factor is not a huge issue, it just seems better not to try and make any more changes, but to focus with, on what we ask for in the grants and not to deviate too much. And that's something that Steve Foster is, always reminds me about. He's like, you're kind of having a little bit of scope shift here. Let's, let's, let's stay back to where we are again.
Yeah, because we can add, we can make us a next, the next step of the request. You know, just like the cemetery did, they continued to.
Eva, bad comparison.
I know. No, it is a good comparison, because ours will be a smaller ass.
Oh, that's true.
Bon, Stan, they raised the bar on applications. Let's, let's admit it.
With a beautiful result, though. I, you know, the result is beautiful, so.
So, for this one, I think we want a vote or a recommendation, Ann, that says what the board would like to use as the paver.
Okay, I'm just, I'm looking at the pictures below the sketch.
Yep.
And the one with like the, the railings and the, the the granite walkway, it looks like has that border. It's like the third picture. Or the second one on the right, the top right, does, do people see what I mean?
Second one on the top right, yep.
Yeah, that, I have a sense that that looks like those granite blocks next to the granite. I like that.
Yeah.
And they have brick walls, like they have some brick too, so it looks nice together.
Yeah, we, we were paying a lot of attention to how to meld all the finish, like use the brick and the granite and make a nice blend of our existing finishes.
Right, yeah, it looks nice. Okay, so, should we?
Can I make a motion that we accept the credit for A slash B option for pavers?
I'll second that.
Okay, I will do the roll call. Mary Deshaun.
Yes.
For A slash B.
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, all right, Eva Humory?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, Ann. Okay, that'll be very nice.
And do we want to consider that a, a motion, and if so, who seconded that motion?
I did.
When is that due, Kathleen? Is that February? For the CPA meeting?
That's, that's the next one. No, that goes back to the Waterfield Design Group. That grant is already done, so that's.
That's right.
Final piece of information that Waterfield Design needs to go and get our bid documents out. We're hoping that they will have the bid documents out before the end of February, and that we could realistically have companies responding and maybe have a construction company chosen, if not for the spring. Because the grant was approved a few years ago, the funds can be spent right now. We do not need to wait for July first to spend the funds. We want to get in the construction company, you know, work schedule. So, maybe this happens in the summertime, maybe this happens in the fall, but we have a realistic chance to get it done by the end of FY twenty-three.
And winter is the perfect time to bid, because that's when construction companies are looking to queue up their project for the spring, summer, fall.
And they have the time for the paperwork related to it.
Right, right. Excellent, okay. Good, all right, so we'll move on now to the north lawn project.
So, that one does tie in. So, the community preservation application cycle closes, I think, on April, February third or fourth. And we have talked about putting in a request this year to have them help cover the cost of the north lawn project. We're not as, in as good a shape with this application, because we don't have any engineering drawings or any construction costs. So, I need to speak again with Dan Beckley, who is the person in the Community Development Office who works with community preservation, and find out exactly what and how much we need to have as supporting documents to that application. Depending on what Dan says, we may need to spend a little money to get some kind of formal statement. We have the original proposal, proposal from Waterfield Design Group from almost maybe a year ago now, that they would help us, you know, come up with a design, a concept, and then a design, and then engineering drawings, and the same process that they would create the construction bid documents. I don't think that that proposal from them is sufficient to have us get the money for the full project. So, there are two possibilities. We can use that Waterfield Design document and put that in this year as the request to the Community Preservation Party, that they pay for the design work. If however, we put that in just as that this year, it means a year from now, we would go back with the engineering and the cost specifications. So, we would be splitting the north lawn project into a two-year request to CPA. So, the question becomes, do we want to see if there's a way to spend potentially a little more of the endowment money between now and February to come up with a document that lets us this become a one-year request as opposed to a two-year or two-step process to CPA?
Kathleen, my, my sense about this is that this is going to be a fairly significant project, particularly in terms of its visibility. And we're going to want some input from the, the public about this. So, I think kind of taking our time with this, rather than trying to do a hurry-up thing, might be a lot better for us, to make sure we get this done right and we get as much input as, as we feel is appropriate, to get everybody's ideas on this. You know, the, the, even that one sketch that Waterfield gave us, that's a pretty, that, that in and of itself is a pretty significant change to what people are used to seeing. So, I think the design build, design this coming year and build the subsequent year, if that's what we, we end up doing, would be a more appropriate way to approach this project.
Well, the only thing is that they seem to have quite a bit of, you know, money this year without, there didn't seem to be lots of applicants, at least at that meeting we went to, it didn't seem.
Yeah, Ann, I was going to say, I was going to second that, and I was going to ask if D had any inside information or, you know, had any idea, or, you know, if Kathleen had opinions, because I had the same sense from, from that CPA meeting, that they didn't have a lot.
Yes, and they were very, and they were very, they seemed enthusiastic about it, too.
Now, but at the same time, I, I do understand exactly what Stan's saying. And if we build enthusiasm and excitement for this project, who knows, someone might come up with a suggestion that we say, geez, we didn't think of that. Let's incorporate that.
And I think the money isn't going anywhere. It is saved, and, and so, it's in there, it's in their pile for a future date. So, I think one of the things that we've learned over time is when you spring things on the public, they don't like it. And so, I like, I like the idea of thoughtfully taking these steps, you know, to, to, to vet these, these changes, because it is a substantive change, I think, really needed, without question. But it is going to take some time to get it circulated.
I think that's a, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I think that's an excellent, excellent point, Mark. And I think if you go to the CPC with focus group results, a fully loaded plan with final design, and really wow them, then you're going to get the full funding all at once, versus trying to cut it up over two years. I always get nervous about projects, because I've seen this in my career. It gets approved in year one, something happens, and finances aren't available for year two, so then it waits a whole nother year. And so, I don't think we want to see that. I think we want to see build, you know, design, build, you know, all of that, but have the public process first.
So, you don't think, Dee, that we should go for some money for design?
Yes.
We, we need to go for money for design, but that design process can be drawn out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, and we also were discussing, like, trying to incorporate some, like, the, all the landscaping with that, too.
Yeah.
So, maybe that would cover design for landscaping also.
And you know, this is a substantive change to our front lawn appearance. So, if we, since, and I'll, I'll put a little plug in for change management, because I do change management, it's all about building this acceptance of the change, making people aware, getting them to desire the change, giving them the ability to weigh in and, and really build that momentum, so that people are really excited about it.
Well, I think the difference, if you, if I look at that, that Waterfield sketch, that really takes this project in a slightly different direction. It's not just cosmetic. You know, it's not just like landscaping. It's creating that outdoor space people have been talking about, where we can do something outdoors that we can't do today. You know, we can have, you know.
Well, we can add it to our strategic plan also.
Right, right, but I mean, I think this is, this gives us some much different opportunities. And I think the public might be very interested in hearing what our thoughts are on how this might actually work. So, you know, I think it's, we have a great chance to sort of build the, kind of a cheering squad for this and see if Kathleen can find more of those rich people who are willing to give us money. I'm rich.
I'm rich, give me a bench. But Kathleen, at this, at the same time, I think the library staff should really be given the opportunity to weigh in on what this space could be for them in their programs, you know?
As part of the sales.
Miss Rhonda about how the, how she would use it for the children, and, you know, that kind of thing.
So, so go back to the, the original thing, my original question is, one, am I giving, submitting any kind of requests to the CPC by February? And if so, what is in that request? So, the Waterfield Design Proposal is just a proposal. And if you read that proposal, they talk exactly about this. They'll come in, they'll run focus groups, they'll talk to the staff, they'll do all of those things we just talked about. And once that's done, and help come up with both the concept and an actual engineered design and the bid construction documents. So, we would not, based on the cost of a project like this, I think necessarily say we've already picked Waterfield Design as the company to do this. So, my CPC application would be to say, here's the first step. We would like to have funds to do the design and the concept and the engineering. And I would use the Waterfield Design Group document as an example of what the cost would like and say, we would like up to twenty-five thousand dollars this year to do the design work, for instance. Because once it's over ten thousand, we can't just do this without taking it out to public bid for it. So, I think in that case, we have enough of a documentation to submit for the design question or the design funds this year, and limit the question when the application this year just to the design work and not to, it would be really nice to say, by the way, could we reserve two thou, two hundred thousand dollars for building a year from now? But that's typically not the way it works. And like Dee said, sometimes year one happens and year two doesn't. But it makes a lot of sense to take the time to it.
I agree, and I also think that that's, it kind of paves, no pun intended, paves the way for the, the committee thinking about it, too. You know, the CPC and getting kind of, because they did seem like, they said, oh, that's exciting, you know, when Kathleen.
Now, Kathleen, if you use Waterfield's proposal, which as you say, I think it's at least about a year old, we need to keep in mind that costs increase. So, we wouldn't necessarily want to use their amount. And who knows, well, look, if they're the lower bit, lower cost, they could win the bid. But we'd want to, like, you know, in whatever kind of language you need, just bump up that number a little bit more. Which is allowed for the passage of time in construction costs.
What was the number in their proposal?
It was in, I think, three stages. If I'm remembering correctly, it totaled, it's maybe somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. So, what I would do is go back to Waterfield Design and explain that we needed to give an example of what costs would be like. That this, you know, using their document does not mean they've got a contract, for instance, or a project or a design. And just ask them, you know, would they be willing to, you know, take that earlier proposal? Many proposals come in and they say the prices in here are good for ninety days. So, we wouldn't, even if we were thinking we were going to work with them, we would go back and ask for revised numbers based on that, that process. we would go back and ask for revised numbers based on that, that process.
And their proposal was from May. So it was in May. They put in the conceptual design as a $10,000 fee. I'm not reading through this. So the final, well, the North Lawn landscape and courtyard design would be 14,000 and the bid phase services 3,000. And then they also had, boy, they had construction, construction phase services and, you know, then a section on expenses. So, but it was from May.
Yeah.
So.
So i- if the board is happy with this approach, and I'm very comfortable with this because I, it's, it is a long process. It, this, this first step was to try and reserve the money for it, not, not to do the project, but to reserve the money to pay for the project. I will put together and circulate to all of you to see the application that asks for the initial money to support the design and specification, but not ask for any construction money.
Is there, Kathleen, is there some way we can take the, with their permission, of course, take the Waterfield proposal and turn it into a specification? That's, you know, because we want what they've offered, basically. Would that, and that would be sort of more generic so that we wouldn't have to get into the sample proposal deal? Would that be one way to approach that?
I think because the, the proposal has multiple parts that all add up to more than 10,000, we don't have an option.
No, no, no. Yeah, we, yeah, but our CPA or our CPC grant request would include a, not their proposal, but a spec which would look like their proposal, but would not do their, would have all the same attributes, not including construction.
The scope of work for the design.
Exactly. The other thing I would, the, the other thing I would say is, I think we should ask for at least 50,000. At least. If not more.
Okay. The, the reason I bring up the Waterfield Design is that if you submit a request without some kind of documentation with hard number, financial numbers in there, it tends not to be looked at very seriously.
Can we attach it as like exhibit A?
Well, and that's what I was thinking, that, that this is an example. It's to demonstrate that we know what the steps are. We have an idea of what each of the steps would cost. But say that, you know, this, again, it, it's to give them some kind of ballpark figure. As a, because I could say, geez, give me 50,000. Although I say, well, what's 50,000 do? Whereas the Waterfield Design lets me say 50,000 gets me A, B, C, and D.
Right. And, and if you, if you included the scope of work, not the Waterfield proposal, but a scope of work like the Waterfield proposal in this, in the CPC grant request, that would be the answer to the question, what do I get for 50,000?
Yeah. And, and say that we've gone and, and got, you know.
Based on best estimates.
Yeah. We've, we've got, we've got an estimate from a company. So it's not just us thinking up a number, but we've, we've gone and got.
And, and it's a company that knows what's, what's happening with our general, you know, the, the front lawn and what we're doing. So it, it's someone that makes sense. They're not in a vacuum, not understanding what's going on at our, at our location. So.
So are we in agreement then that that's what I will put in the CPC request is for this first phase, the design work?
Can I make a motion for that?
Well, one, one second. What about? Do we want to add design work for like landscaping too? To be included as part of the North Lawn project, since we're going to be like digging things up and?
I think from the point of view of the CPC, I think we need to be a little careful about making this too broad. You know, they might not want to fund that, whereas we could fund this other project and get it. And that more looks like maintenance in some ways, right?
Couldn't we, if we decided landscaping wouldn't come until after construction? So we could roll landscaping into the construction cost request.
Correct.
Because that's, you know, as things, and because also I think the thoughts about landscaping are all part of the design process, right? We don't want to put it to, make it too early.
Right. Sounds good. See, that's why 50 grand is the right number.
Right. No, yeah, I agree.
So we need a, it's a motion. I'd like to make a motion to, for Kathleen to proceed with putting a request in for CPA funding in, for the 20, the February 2022 application for design services for the North Lawn project. Do I have to put in a, a financial, using Waterfield Designs bid or proposal as a, as an attachment or an exhibit to, to your request for up to $50,000? That is that, we'll say up to $50,000 for design services.
Yeah, all CPA, all CPA grants are not to exceed grants. So they will pay for what you spend.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark second in that. And we will do the roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
And, and also yes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This is the, this is the exciting part of the job.
We like spending money. Yeah.
Yeah, really.
No, this is great. Big improvements coming. Okay, so then the last, anything else about that, Kathleen? I think we've.
No, we've, we've covered all that really well. Thank you.
So the next meeting date will be Tuesday, January 25th. Does that work for you, Eva?
It does. Thank you for asking.
Good. So it remains to be seen whether or not we'll be virtual again or back in person. Depending on how this COVID thing plays out, I guess.
And, and just so you know, the town manager, once again, is being very proactive in terms of health and safety, both of the staff and the community population. So our, some of the protocols that we were planning to end by next Monday, January 10th, we've extended them out. So we will be keeping the staff to a, a minimum and spread out across the building. And obviously keeping people wearing their masks and doing the additional cleaning and stuff that we've been doing. And some of our book groups, which we're starting to meet in person, will either go virtually for January, or maybe they'll be postponed. For some of the groups, like the third grader book group, it's a little hard to do it virtually. So you may see that some of our programs are announced as either going virtual when they were going to be in person. We had left many of our adult programs as virtual, as virtual anyway. Just so you're aware that, you know, once again, we're really looking at the numbers in the community, which are quite awful. But then they're not just quite awful in North End over there, quite awful everywhere. Sadly.
Yeah.
So if you see no such things in, in the, in our news or in our events and stuff, it's, that's, it's relating back to that, that health and safety aspect right now for both the staff and the community. And of course, the goal with the staff is not only for us to be healthy, but for us to be able to keep the library open. One of the things I did earlier today and why I didn't have as many things out sooner was there was a meeting of all the directors for the 36 MVLC libraries. And we all went through where we are. And most of the libraries have plans for when they start scaling back, when they lose staff. Do they close weekends? Do they close nights? Do they stop having people in the building and go back to curbside? The, the rates right now in, in the communities all around us are very poor. And so that, I, I hate to say it's back to what we were talking about in March 2020. You know, when's the next step? And, you know, how do we go backwards? The only saving grace is we've already done it once, so we have a better idea about it. But we really hope we're not going there. My goal at this stage, because we can spread people out enough around the building and get people to follow the protocols, we don't need to either reduce hours or services. But if we have too many staff out, then that may be something that I would go back to the town manager and say, can we cut off Saturday or Sunday? Can we, you know, start closing at five at night? Right. In order to have enough people to have the building still staffed, at least part of the time. And really not go back to curbside and accept as a, as a last extreme measure.
Right. Okay, that sounds reasonable. Okay, so we, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Well, now the other two dates are on there.
Can I, can I just make a comment before?
Yes.
We did. So I cannot thank all of you enough for the support that you sent during my difficult time in November and your very generous donation in my dad's name. I, I cannot thank you enough. It was very heartfelt and very special. And I said in my note, I'm so blessed to work with all of you and I really sincerely thank you.
We love you. We love you, Dee.
Very welcome.
You're welcome. That's right.
We're very sorry. Must have been a hard holiday, so. Anyways. All right, well, thanks, everyone. And we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that. Earl, go ahead. Earl's seconding it.
Okay, and just in time to let my dog out. Okay, so do we need a roll call for that?
Probably.
Okay, all right. Mary?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark? Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
And, and yes. Okay, we're adjourned.
All right.
6:21.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Yes. Bye-bye.
Good night. And Cam, do you have us as?